Good evening, Jay.
Good evening, Mayor.
My kids call me that when they're trying to be sarcastic. Rich here and Kevin, Jay, Paul.
Hey, good evening. How's everyone doing?
Good.
Good.
Just waiting for Kevin to come on video and then we'll, uh... There he is.
Okay.
All right. Good evening, everybody. The time is now seven o'clock. I'm sorry, six o'clock. I don't know why my clock says that. And I'd like to welcome everybody to the regular meeting with the City of Galt for Tuesday, November the 16th, 2021. Due to the ongoing COVID-19 pandemic emergency, we have to conduct handle our city council meetings much differently than we usually do for the protection of the public and our city staff. I'm now going to ask our city manager, Mr. Heinz, to give a brief explanation to the public. Sir?
Good evening, everyone. Lorenzo Heinz, city manager here. This meeting of the Galt City Council is being conducted by teleconference slash video conference in compliance with Assembly Bill 361. Members of the public will see the council members and city staff who are appearing via remote video slash telephone connections. City council meetings will be held virtually by teleconference or video conference only until further notice. Today's agenda states that we are also using the Zoom webinar format, which allows the public to provide live public comment. Members of the public may use the link to enter the webinar as attendees. They should also be able to use the raise their hand option in the Zoom webinar to let us know if they would like to speak and should do so when the mayor announces the time for general public comment or when specific agenda item is called if your comment concerns an item on the agenda. Attendees should also see a lower hand feature if they change their mind and do not want to speak. In addition, members of the public may use the call-in feature also described in the agenda. You may just listen if you prefer, but if you would like to speak when the mayor announces the time for public comment, you may also, you may do so by pressing star nine at that time. We request, as we typically do in in-person council meetings, that speakers provide their name and address when they are called upon to speak, but doing so isn't required. Today's agenda also states that residents may submit written public comments via email to pubcom@cityofgalt.org prior to the council meeting. In view of the direct video conference and call-in direct opportunities for public comment just described, email comments will not be read out loud during the meeting, but will be distributed to county, city council members and made part of the official minutes and posted on the city's website prior to the meeting. Mr. Mayor, that concludes my comments. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, sir. I'd like to now call the meeting to order. Tina, can you give me a roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu?
Here.
Councilmember Papino?
Here.
Councilmember Vandenberg?
Here.
Councilmember Lozano?
Here.
Mayor Farmer?
Here. I'd like to ask everyone to join us in a silent prayer, followed by a flag salute. You would now all please join us in a pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Tina, would you like to read our replay statement, please?
This meeting of the Galt City Council will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel, on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed captioned and webcast at www.sacmetrocable.tv. Today's meeting will air Friday, November 19th at 9:00 a.m. and Saturday, November 20th at 9:00 a.m. This meeting can also be viewed at youtube.com/metrocable14.
All right. Thank you. Moving on to item B, agenda approval additions and/or deletions. Do I have anything from the council? No? Okay. Moving on to item C, public comment. Tina?
Under Government Code Section 54954.3, members of the public may address the city council on non-agenda items. The public comment section is for the city council to receive comments. Except for brief responses to questions, no discussion or action may be taken on any item that is not listed on the agenda. Please limit comments to a maximum of five minutes. Due to the statewide emergency, public comments may also be submitted, as noted above, via the options listed on the first page of the agenda for providing live public comment or prior to the meeting via email to pubcom@cityofgalt.org by 4:00 p.m. on the day of the meeting, which will be distributed to city council, made part of the official minutes, and posted on the city's website prior to the meeting, but will not be read out loud.
Okay. Thank you. Do we have any hands raised online?
We do. We have two hands raised. So the first one will be Emily Sanders.
Okay, Ms. Sanders, go ahead.
Emily, you have five minutes. If you want to go ahead and unmute your mic, and your time starts.
Okay. Thank you, guys. My name is Emily Sanders, and I have lived and worked in Galt for 20 years. I love our little town, and I believe that it is worth fighting for. I am here today to ask the council to end the state of emergency within the city of Galt, effectively ending all mandates related to COVID-19. I believe our governor has continued to abuse his power by extending the state of emergency status. If we do not stand up against this, then who will? If we cannot be brave and do what is right, then who will? Let's lead by example and hope that others will follow. My hope is this will give courage to businesses and school boards alike, and that they might feel encouraged to drop the mandates and make masking and vaccinating choice rather than forcing all to comply. I'm asking that you put this to a vote, and if it passes, make a public announcement declaring our city's intent to end all unlawful mandates. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sanders, for your comment.
Thank you very much. Next person we have is Matthew Ward.
Mr. Ward, go ahead.
One moment. Let me get him in. Mr. Ward?
Hi.
Go ahead. Unmute your mic. Can you have five minutes?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
It is Christie Ward. Sorry, my title is under my husband's. I'm using his computer right now, but...
No problem.
My name is Christie Ward. Today, I am speaking as a community member to, oh, well, a native community member to the Galt and Harold region, and as a mother of three. I have a couple straightforward requests to the Galt City Council, and I'll just read them as such. I'd like to see city council resume in-person sessions. I know or thought this was an agenda item. I missed the last meeting, so I do not know what happened. But I do not think it's appropriate to continue via Zoom. Our Galt Community Schools have been open for in-person instruction since last May. I mean, March, March. This was nine months ago. Galt Elementary School District Board meetings are also in-person. Galt restaurants and establishments have been open for many, 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 many months. There is no reason to obstruct your public of Galt from attending a city council meeting. Please make this a discussion and an agenda item for, uh... to vote for full return to in-person. I'm sorry, I'm stuttering a little here. Next, I'd like to discuss the state of emergency that the state is being held in. I would like to see our city councils come together to discuss what classifies a state of emergency, and if this is warranted in our county or city to continue to hold over its citizens, as the California state governor continues to do. I'll read the following quote regarding states of emergency. "A state of emergency is a legal government declaration made during times of national threat or disaster. It allows for government to assume exceptional powers." Our city is not in a state of emergency. Our state is not in a state of emergency. What our governor continues to do is wrong. I am speaking to you regarding the state of emergency because I need your help. Your community needs your help. I would like to see our Galt City Council collectively write our leaders requesting an immediate end to the state of emergency. It is an overreach of power to reinstate the state of emergency for the third time with no end in sight. We, the public, have now been given the rough timeline of March 2022, but we have been given dates prior as well. It is time to step up in a bigger way. I ask that Galt City Council look into what classifies a state of emergency, determine that this is indeed unnecessary, then exhaust all avenues to reach out to all our local and distant representatives speaking for the community of Galt on this issue and demanding an end. I email, I call, and I know many that do the same. I have had zero responses until the day. I'll tell you that part in a minute, but I have had zero responses. And I know most like me have received zero or little responses. That's why I'm reaching out to you guys collectively, because I believe a city council board is going to be able to reach out better than one citizen. I'm asking you to help your community. This is an overreach, and we need to end it. And tell us, citizens, what else we can do to help with, to end this. Mr. Donatoli did reach out to me today, and he said he is willing to meet if we do another town hall or community meeting. That is my next question to you. I would like to see Galt City Council do a Q&amp;A session or town hall discussion of these matters. This can easily be done prior to a scheduled board meeting, I mean, city council meeting, or at a different date. I think it would be wise to join heads, and Mr. Donatoli said he would be willing to come, as well as get another representative to come. So I'd really like to see our city of Galt really step up in a big way and really do some outreach for us as citizens in your community that want this to be done, want an end to this, and think this is a very big overreach of power. Lastly, I'd like to mention, I'd encourage Galt City Council to reach out to other city council and even school boards to see what they've been doing to help and how our city can help. Like, reach out to Calaveras, see what their city is doing, see what their school board is doing. I think that's the gist of it. I know I kind of rambled there, but basically, I'd love a question, a Q&amp;A session or a town hall discussion with all of you and Mr. Donatoli and maybe another representative, and of course, all community members to discuss what we can do to fight this. This is not okay. See what city council can do to end the state of emergency. I'd like to see, uh, I'm trying to recap very fast. Resume in-person meetings.
Mrs. Ward, your time is...
To other city councils. Thank you for your time. Thank you.
Thank you. We have another caller on the line. It was the Coons family.
Okay, go ahead.
One moment. Go ahead and unmute your mic, and you have five minutes.
Okay. Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. My name is Annette Coonsey. Thank you so much for having me this evening and for the public comment opportunity. And so I just wanted to echo some of the comments tonight and share some thoughts, as well as plea for your assistance. So as you probably are well aware, there's a group, and it was even featured on the news last night. There's a group of parents in Galt that are very hopeful and worried about the vaccine mandates and about the continued endless mask mandates that are happening for our children. And so we wanted to ask your help again to help us be the voice. We have a lot of voices, and we are trying our very, very hardest to share those voices, but we want your help in possibly reaching out at your level to see what, what type of, how we can come together, how we can have those town hall meetings that really get to the heart of where people, where their hearts are and where their minds are at. And then also wanted to invite you to our COE. There's a meeting on Thursday. I believe that one of the individuals from reopen California schools will be there, but it's a Q&amp;A session, and I would definitely encourage you to participate. A lot of Galt residents will be going to that meeting. So it's a great other opportunity to hear their voices. I do also want to request in-person meetings. I think it's important to see people and look at them in their faces as they're speaking to you. And we go to stores, we have school, we have many opportunities where we get to see each other's faces, and there is nothing more valuable than the human face and expression, I would say. So I would encourage you to definitely consider that and put that as an action item moving forward. The other, the last thing I'm going to do is, is get a little philosophical. I, and this has to do with the state of emergency and sort of some of the directives that have been provided. So I heard this in a documentary, and so I wanted to share it. You know, people individually can be dangerous, but what's more dangerous are the common men, the functionaries, ready to believe and to act without asking questions. So I just want to say, we're going to be faced with a lot of decisions probably moving forward, and I would just ask you to continually ask those questions. So I just want to ask a few questions and throw them out. So one is, why is there no end in sight? There is, why is it that what started as two weeks to help the hospitals is now an expectation of perfection? Why is it that we are allowed decisions in every other aspect of our life, what we drink, what we eat? So why is it that those, some of those, that free will and those decisions are being taken away from us? Why is that we're seeing our first responders and those that we highly valued just a few months ago now being taken out of their precious positions? Why is it that we are allowing beautiful children's faces to be covered? And I also want to ask, you know, what is it, why have we abandoned every health principle that we have followed for thousands of years? Why is it suddenly that we're abandoning this? So only you can answer those questions in your heart, but I would say, listen to those voices that say these are morally and ethically not in line with what is right. And I want to say, you know, as you're making this decision, sort of project out, where is the line in the sand for you? What does that look like, and will you recognize it? And I would say, just continue, continue to ask those questions, not only of yourself, of each other, of us, and then of the larger, you know, authorities above you. Because if we don't ask those questions, we will fall into a place that I don't think that we, any of us want to be. So just wanted to again say thank you. I look forward, if we have another town hall, to seeing all your faces. And thank you again for the opportunity to speak this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Coonsey.
Thank you so much.
Councilmember Lozano and Councilmember Vandenberg have questions. Rich, go ahead first.
Ms. Coonsey, are you still on the line?
Oh, I could put her back on the line. One moment, please. Mrs. Coonsey, she's back on the line.
Yes, I'm here. Thank you.
Hey, Annette, real quick, this is Rich Lozano. You mentioned a meeting at our COE. Is that at the elementary school, and what time on Thursday?
It's on Thursday. It's from 5:00 to 6:30 p.m. And yes, it's at the school.
Okay, thank you.
And there's also an elementary board meeting tomorrow night that many of us will be attending as well.
Mr. Vandenberg, you have a question for Ms. Coonsey? You're on mute, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to speak to all the callers real briefly. That item H2 is about in-person meetings, so stick around.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Vandenberg.
Thank you so much.
I would like to say too, thank you to the callers that have called in. I would like to say personally, I agree with most of what was said by several of you in watching some of the school board meetings, and it's, um... It's, uh, there's a big battle going on, and, and there's a lot of people that are very courageous out there. And I personally, first, before I go on, I wanted to also thank Mr. Sanders, Mr. Merrill, Mrs. Robinson, and Mrs. Shamhart for their comments that were sent in via email. Some of those comments were regarding live meetings, which we do have on our agenda tonight. So stick around if you want to see that. And so I, I, do we have any further comment, public comment? Any hands raised?
We do not.
Okay. Well, before we move on, I, I would actually personally be interested in doing some sort of town hall. I think I would like to see us facilitate maybe something outdoors. If Mr. Natoli is willing to come, I think that's, that's great. I think it's important that leaders above us are, if we're able to be a conduit to that, I think we should do that. And maybe we can even reach out to some of our other leaders, our assemblyman, maybe even our, uh, our other representatives and see if they could attend as well. So I don't know if any of my fellow council would be interested in having our city manager look at facilitating something like that.
I would be interested, but I'm not sure we have that, uh... procedural authority at the moment.
Well, I can bring it back at the end of the meeting. Frank, should I just do that, or? You're on mute. We can't hear you.
Yeah, that was going to be my suggestion at the end of the meeting, at the appropriate place to discuss that. Thank you.
Well, thank you for the comments. Would it be appropriate for me to bring up something that was one of the comments sent in earlier? I'm sorry, it was a written comment from Mr. Merrill about a homeless issue. Could I ask that that be addressed real quick? Would that be appropriate for right now? I just wanted to, it was a question...
What are you looking, what are you looking, what are you looking to address?
There was, there was a public comment. He asked about what was going to be done about some tents that have started a little bit of a, kind of an encampment that started to pop up around the Walnut Avenue, uh, Avenue, uh, on-ramp or exit. And so I just wanted to see if we could get a comment from Chief calling us. On ramp or exit. And so I just wanted to see if we could get a comment from Chief Colin Askey or from city manager on that while we have those people probably watching instead of waiting till the end. Of the meeting.
Yeah, that'd be fine.
Mr. Mayor, my understanding is we referred that to Caltrans is that is Caltrans right away. There are two tents at that exit that we're aware of currently.
Okay. All right. Thank you for that. I appreciate that. All right. Well, there are no further comments. And if you, uh, would like to make a comment, if you're on the phone, you need to press star nine to raise your hand. And you will be allowed to speak. Otherwise, uh, you can raise your hand if you're on Zoom and, uh, we will allow you to speak. So I'll give you a moment for those of you on the phone that did not know how to do that and then we will move on. All right. Any, uh, hands raised? Rose or Tina?
No, there are no hands raised online.
Okay. All right. Moving on to item D, presentations. Do you have any presentations this evening?
None this evening.
Okay, moving on to item E. Reports by city council members on regional boards, commissions and committees. Mr. Vice Mayor.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. On the regional, uh, board meeting, uh, the meeting was canceled. It's gonna be a next couple of week. So I will report back to you. The only thing, uh, the last Saturday I attended that, uh, reading Spanish. Uh, and English event at the library. It was well organized by Mayor Sean Farmer, Latice Aldis. KCR, uh, thirteen anchor and Kirk Smith from the Welpert Grill. Library employees and some other. This event was very magical. You know, good turnout. I see a lot of families come together to celebrate reading. In Spanish, in English. It's a huge bin for community. Uh, thank you for the organization. Thank you for the organizers. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, and thank you for your, uh, sponsorship. Councilmember Papinow.
I don't have anything to report.
All right. Councilmember Vandenberg.
I have nothing to report at this time.
All right. Councilmember Lozano.
Yeah, briefly, um. Uh, this Thursday, I have a Sacoag Board meeting. I'll report back on that at our next meeting. Did have the Edmund Transit Transit Needs, uh, hearing. Uh, we had one person speak. From the North Sacramento area. These are regional meetings that are happening everywhere. And so, uh, people, people from all communities can call into any of them depending on what day and time works best for them. So. Talked about, uh, the, the lady was discussing, uh, some issues with, uh, first and last mile. Transit issues where, uh, you know, it takes time to get to the location to pick up the transit, public transit. And so she was. Wanting to see something more, um, closely related to the, the transit hubs to get people to them. And so. That was about it. It was a pretty quick meeting. Um, and that's it. I'll report back next time on the Sacoag Board meeting.
Okay, thank you, sir. Um, a couple of things. Not really committee, but, uh, uh, Councilmember Lozano and I did have our initial. Uh, preparation meeting, I guess we'll call it, uh, for our ad hoc for the cow waste. Um, we have a meeting with cow waste, our first with them tomorrow, um, for our ad hoc committee. So have that in the afternoon. And, um, just wanted to mention the library to, um, thank you to my, uh, you know, as, as someone who serves on the library board. Um, representing Galt and Ileton, um, was very happy to be involved in that event and I want to thank, uh, Ms. Ordez. And, uh, her family and all the library staff for the Galt Library did such an excellent job putting that, that event together and. Everything and, and of course, wouldn't have been possible without the sponsors that we were able to, uh, give out a hundred and fifty bucks to over a hundred kids. In Galt, um, thanks to the Vice Mayor and many other businesses, um, in the community who are very generous as they always are. And it was an overall great event and looking forward to doing something at the Galt Library again, um, in the spring possibly. So thank you for everybody that came. And thank you city staff who helped put the message out on social media, Ms. Mendez and. And city manager, um, for allowing us to promote that event. So appreciate that. And thank you to Vice Mayor for being there as well. Appreciate that. So, uh, moving on to. Our information consent calendar. It is recommended that items one through five be acted on simultaneously unless a separate discussion. And or action is requested by a council member. The consent calendar this evening is item one, the subject, minutes of the regular meeting of November second, two thousand and twenty-one. Item two is to receive and file warrants for the period ending October twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-one. Item three is AB three sixty-one, resolution, make findings necessary to continue to conduct Brown Act meetings by teleconference. Item four is ordinance of the city council of city of Galt authorizing the levy of special taxes in a community facilities district. Including certain annexation territory identified as annexation number six, Katerina Estates into the city of Galt. Community Facilities District Number twenty twenty dash one, Public Services. And item five memorandum of understanding with Sacramento Abandoned Vehicle Services Authority for cost sharing. For consultant costs related to a county ballot measure. Do I have any public comment on any of these items? Seabird.
No, there are no hands raised online.
Okay, if you have a comment on the consent calendar, you may raise your hand or press star nine if you're on the phone. If not, I'll be looking for a motion, momentarily to approve.
Moved.
Hold on just a second, Mr. Vice Mayor. Still no comment? No hands?
Correct, no hands raised.
All right, items move, consent calendar moved by Vice Mayor Sandu. Have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Vandenberg. Can I have a roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu.
Hi.
Councilmember Papinow.
Hi.
Councilmember Vandenberg.
Hi.
Councilmember Lozano.
Hi.
Mayor Farmer.
Hi, consent calendar approved five to zero. Moving on to item G, scheduled matters, notice of public hearing. Do we have any this evening, Tina?
None this evening.
All right, thank you. Moving on to our regular calendar. First item is gonna be from our treasurer's office. It is the treasurer's report for a period ending September of two thousand and twenty-one. Mr. Farrell.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, city council members and the citizens of Galt. So, can I, you have before you the treasurer's report as of September twenty twenty-one? Uh, but first I wanna give you some, some good news and kind of some, uh, uh, general, uh, unemployment numbers. So the unemployment number for Galt is five point five percent. Which is great because if you remember about six months ago, I was sitting here and I told you it was up around nine or ten percent. So that's, that's good. We're getting people in, in the city. Back to, back to work. In comparison, the county of Sacramento is at six point one percent. Home prices. So as of the end of September. The home prices, this for the median sales price was, uh, four hundred and eighty-five thousand here in Galt. And compared that to a year ago, it was four hundred and eighty-three thousand five hundred. So it went up fifteen hundred dollars. Here's the kicker though. Is last year at this time for that four hundred and eighty-three thousand, you get a home of, uh, two thousand square foot. This year, but for that same, say, four hundred and eighty-five thousand price, it's only seventeen hundred square feet. So it's a reduction of, uh, three hundreds. Three hundred, uh, square feet for, but you do get the same price. Um, so, uh, going to the actual treasurer's report. The majority of our money is in a life at twenty, uh, uh, earning point two one percent. As rates are rising and they are slowly ticking up. I'm trying to take advantage of that by buying some, uh, government agencies, mostly the federal, uh, home loan bank. Uh, Fannie Mae and Freddie Mac have not come to the market yet, but I'm expecting that shortly. We also know that. There's large inflation right now. Since, since April, the inflation rate has been at four point two percent just this past October. This. It was at six point two percent. If you've gone to the grocery store and purchased gas, you know that the prices are rising. That will put pressure on the Federal Reserve to raise the rates. I actually don't think they're going to raise them until. Pro mid next year. And at that point in time, you're gonna see, uh, yields of bonds go up. And so that way the. Interest rates will go up. Now that will decrease, of course, some active home buying or refinancing of homes. So, and then, uh, lastly, I wanted to mention for the very first quarter fiscal quarter that ended, the city earned about eighty thousand dollars in interest. Uh, multiply that by four and you're probably looking at about two hundred and forty, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in interest just, uh, for, for the whole fiscal year. Now, as rates go up, of course, that, that amount of interest that we earn will go up. So, yeah, that's, that's all I have for you tonight. If you have any questions, please, uh, please let me know. And I, otherwise I ask that you approve the, uh, treasurer's report ending September twenty twenty-one.
All right, thank you, Sean. I appreciate you always giving us the, uh, the, uh, home information too. I think that's, um. Good for, uh, the people watching. A lot of people judge their investments by the prices of their homes and things like that. So. Do you, do you actually, do you actually, so you're pretty much, the, the chatter is that rates will probably go up mid next year. Is that what people are expecting?
Yes. Yeah. Now, the, if it's up to the Federal Reserve, they, they don't want to raise the rate. But I think there's gonna be so much pressure, they're gonna be forced to raise that rate. And, and, um, as I said, I see it as, as somewhere around. April to June of next year. And I see, I, I think you're gonna see it maybe twenty-five to fifty basis points.
And what is it now currently?
It's like a zero to twenty-five basis points. I mean, it's, it's, you know, right around ten to fifteen, actually. So that's, that's the target.
Okay. Okay, Mr. Vandenberg, you have a question for Mr. Farrell?
Yeah, Mr. Farrell, uh, thank you for, uh, you're always entertaining. I'm curious how our funds. I'm curious how our funds will be, uh, positioned to take advantage of this opportunity should it arise.
Well, I, it, they're, they're very well positioned. Um, as a matter, as I said, twenty-one, uh, I'm sorry. Sixty-three percent of our funds right now is in, is in life, which means that we have. One day liquidity on those funds. So we can take advantage of those higher rates. As a matter of fact. During the month of September alone, I bought two, uh, federal home loan banks. And, and then I bought two more in October. So we're, we're starting to take advantage of those. The, the rates are slightly ticking up right now. So we're taking advantage of those rates right now. And then as they increase more and they will. Um, you know, say, early next year, early to mid next year, we'll have plenty of funds in life to, to be able to buy, buy those. And I buy them in three million dollar blocks. And, um, they're all usually. Government agencies, they're usually callable. And as you know, per government code, I can't go beyond five years. So I'm trying to keep it as, as, uh, you know, earning the, the most that I possibly can. To give you an idea, right now, today, a three-year treasury note is at eighty-five basis points. But CDs, the most I can get at, for CDs is seventy-five to eighty basis points. So I guess the, that's a long answer. Councilmember Vandenberg to, to your, uh, question. But yes, we are well positioned to take advantage of those higher rates when they occur.
Thank you, sir. That's good news.
Okay.
Does any of the other council have any questions, uh, for Mr. Farrell? Do we have any, uh, public comment on, uh, this particular item? Tina?
We have no hands raised online.
Okay, if you would like to, uh, make a comment, please raise your hand on Zoom or press star nine if you are on the phone. And we will allow you to, uh, make a comment. We'll give you a moment to do so. All right, if there are no public comment, then I will entertain a motion to accept the treasurer's report as submitted.
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Lozano.
Seconded.
Seconded by Councilmember Papinow. We have a roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Sandu.
Hi.
Councilmember Papinow.
Hi.
Councilmember Vandenberg.
Hi.
Councilmember Lozano.
Hi.
Mayor Farmer.
Hi, approved or accepted five to zero. Thank you, Mr. Farrell.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to the next item in our regular calendars from our city manager's office. Item H two coronavirus COVID ninety, COVID nineteen update. Mr. Hines.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Can you all see that, uh, presentation?
Yes.
Alrighty, so I have some good news for everyone tonight. So our. We'll start with our case, uh, summary. And so in Sacramento County, the number of cases have gone up two percent since our last meeting. Uh, the number of deaths in Sacramento County has also gone up two percent. Here in Galt, uh, the number of cases has, uh, increased two percent and the number of deaths have not increased. So we're at zero. So that's some good news there. Sacramento, uh, so our daily case rate here in Sacramento is currently at ten point two per one hundred thousand in population. That's down from fifteen point three, uh, per one hundred thousand, which was measured from our last meeting. So we've gone from fifteen point three. Down to ten point two. A couple of months ago, we were sitting at about thirty-three, um, per one hundred thousand. So it's great to see this number tick down. Um, so low so quickly. So I hope things, this is a sign that, uh, this is, uh, this calamity that we've been in is, is slowly coming to an end. Area hospitals are currently have a hundred and fifty-three COVID hospitalizations. That's also down from a hundred and eighty. COVID testing continues to be offered every Thursday, Friday and Saturday here in Galt at the Chabola. And, uh, testing details are only available for the Thursday test site. Um, on Thursday, November eleventh, uh, total of eighty-six tests were administered compared to two hundred on October twenty-eighth. Uh, the COVID nineteen vaccination, uh, vaccine booster doses are now available to everyone age eighteen and above. And the vaccination locations can be found on the county's website. The best news of today. Effective today, this came in this afternoon. The California Department of Public Health has permitted jurisdictions to implement local exemptions. To the requirement for face masks during play for youth basketball and volleyball. Participants, uh, participants in Sacramento County must do one of the following. Wear a mask at all times, including during practice, scrimmages and gameplay. There's no testing requirement if you do that. Or you can perform, um, at least weekly screening tests with either the PCR testing. Or antigen testing of all individuals, including those who are fully vaccinated. So you can wear a mask. Um, where there's no testing requirement. But if you are, uh, you desire not to wear a mask, there is a testing requirement, a weekly testing requirement. Masks must continue to be worn by all participants when not actively engaged in practices, scrimmages or gameplay. So we're currently reaching out to the county to make sure we understand this, but, uh, to, to make sure we're clear in our understanding. But it looks like as. Long as folks are getting a test on a weekly basis, they can, uh, do without the mask during play. Um, but if they are, again, participants and they're not actively engaged, then wearing a mask is, um, required. So, um, our Parks and Recs Director, um, Armando Solis is just confirming a few things with the county. And, um, you'll see that reflected in our Parks and Recreation, uh, offerings. And Mr. Mayor, that's all I have for you this evening regarding COVID nineteen.
All right, thank you, sir. Well, I'm happy to hear that, uh, change with the basketball. I know it's been a pretty, uh, contentious subject. And I'm glad the county has acknowledged, um, the concerns wi- with that. So, um, that's good news. Mr. Papinow, you have a question, sir? Yeah, jumping back to the daily case rate, uh, which is at ten point two, I believe the presentation said.
Yes.
Prior to the last, uh, order by the county public health officer. And do you recall what our target was to lift the mask mandate?
I, I seem to recall the number, um, uh, five percent or five. Uh, seemed to be the number that jumps out at me, but, uh, it looks like Director Solis is on the line. Maybe he has, uh, more clarity.
Yes, and meetings with, uh, the county, they've indicated that five per one hundred thousand would be the number to look to lift the mask mandate.
All right, 'cause I know I, I noticed I was looking back today that the current order. There is no target. Um, it's just whenever she says so.
Yes, and she's indicated that that's the number that she's looking at.
Okay. All right, thank you. Mr. Vandenberg, you have a comment?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, it's good to see that they're recognizing antigens. That's, that's a reasonable scientific conclusion and. The, the data you gave us is one tenth of one percent per hundred thousand. That is minute. Uh, I really fail to see why they're not letting things get back to normal. That's all I have, Mayor.
All right, thank you, sir. We have any public comment on this particular item?
We currently do not have any hands raised on, oh. Take that back. We have one hand raised. Mrs. Ward again. Let me go ahead and allow her to speak.
Go ahead, Miss Ward.
Thank you. Um, I know whatever I say, you probably can't really respond on. Um, but I was just listening and it was, I heard five per one hundred thousand case rate to lift mask mandate is what county health wants. Did I hear that correct? Can I see a head shake? Okay. Um, so why not just pick a date as a city council and go outside that guideline? Um, because if we keep playing this, I'm I'm not trying to be disrespectful, but if we keep playing this game, we may not see an end. So why not set a date that mask free in the city of Galt? Well, we many businesses are already mask free, but like, why not declare the city of Galt mask free or mass choice, I should say. Those who wish to wear one, great. Those that wish not to, great. Um, I just wanted to throw that out there um, to set an end date without um, county health approval. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Miss Ward.
Thank you.
Any other hands raised?
There are no other hands raised online.
Okay. Tally council comments. All right. All right, well, then we will move on. Next item is going to be item H three, return to in-person city council meetings. Mr. Heinz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, pursuant to current state and county health orders, order requirements, face coverings must be required during the entire uh, city council meeting if they're held in person. Uh, this applies to all city staff, city council members, and the public. Um, based on um, item four of the Sacramento County Health Order issued on July twenty ninth, twenty twenty one, the city is required to do the following. And for those for the those of you following at home, I'm on page three or four of the staff report. And so these items are, we are to require all patrons to wear face coverings for indoor settings regardless of their vaccination status. Post clearly visible and easy to read signage at all entry points for indoor settings to communicate the masking requirements to all patrons. Um, in addition, uh, those responsible for indoor public settings are strongly encouraged to provide face coverings at no cost to individuals uh, required to wear them. And so the city currently abides by all of these, this list of items. Um, we'll move down to the next paragraph, enforcement of the facial covering requirements. And so city staff in attendance at in-person city council meetings will be required to wear facial coverings until such time as the health order is lifted. Um, regarding the enforcement um, at each of the city department lobby areas, staff takes an educational approach to remind patrons to wear their mask indoors. Um, it is important to note that tolerance of individuals violating local public health orders may put the city as an entity at risk or put an individual staff members at risk. And so the item is before council tonight, I am seeking direction uh, from the council. Uh, at our last council meeting, the issue was raised about returning to in-person meetings. Um, if council desires to move to in-person meetings, um, we can do that starting December seventh. If council desires to do a hybrid approach where we have some members that are on Zoom and some members that are in the in the council chamber, um, I ask that we um, be given time and um, set that meeting for December twenty first. It all depends on which way the council wants to go. Or your third option is to keep the Zoom format until that number gets down to a point where the county health officer is lifting all mask mandates. And so those are the options that I'm presenting to you all tonight. Um, you're welcome to um, present your own options, but um, that's the that's the decision at hand.
All right, thank you, sir. Go ahead and uh, get the discussion going on this. Uh, we'll start with Mr. Vandenberg since you have your hand up first. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. I think we um, discussed it at length in the last meeting, and I simply move to uh, go to live meetings.
And 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 council member, forgive me for interrupting. Um, you could just merely give me the direction. And um, as if I if I have three members that are saying we'd like to go back to live in-person meetings, or we'd like to do hybrids, um, that's enough direction for me.
Sure, but I'm just one voice. Thank you.
Understood, understood, sir.
I would like to, I'm just gonna go one by one to to, because I I think this is an important thing that um, I mean, I understand that as a body, the three of us can give a majority, but I would like to see how everybody feels about this, and it'd be nice if we could all get a consensus on this. Um, so I will go to Vice Mayor.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And uh, we all know, uh, last meeting, we take a lengthy time. I'm gonna be very quick. I'm leaning towards the in-person meeting. There is a different reason. Uh, first, my biggest thing is lot of citizen, they wants to be personal meeting. Uh, the second thing I will ask, uh, you know, from Mr. Heinz, if we can do the hybrid meeting, what possibility, why we taking, if we doing the hybrid meeting, we take a option to hybrid meeting in the next meeting, uh, it will be what kind of difficulties is is out of difficulty due to the equipment or?
It is difficult due to the equipment, um, due to the technological requirements that are involved in doing essentially a Zoom meeting and a live meeting at the same time. It is, it's already a technological stretch for us to do the Zoom meetings. Uh, I've got folks here in City Hall. I've got two people manning the Zoom meeting. I've got one gentleman sitting in the studio um, working um, for the local cable company. And so it's, so we've got fair number of people doing and manning this Zoom meeting. Now, when we add a live meeting on top of it, uh, that adds another layer of complexity. And all I'm asking for is another couple of weeks to work out the details. But if you want to go back to in-person meetings where everybody's in the chamber, we can do that on the next meeting.
All right, thank you.
Uh, quick question before I go, and I apologize for my next council member. Um, just if if we were to go to live meetings, would it be possible to leave the the phone-in feature as as a as a means? I only am concerned for those that don't want to come out of their home, that still want to be able to have public comment, that can't come in person.
And so, Mr. Mayor, um, I just wanted to set, let you know that the same phone-in feature that we use for the the singular council meeting that we had earlier this year, we'll we'll do that.
Okay, so that wouldn't, that wouldn't create a technological uh, challenge to do if we forego the Zoom but left the call in, is what I'm trying to clarify.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Uh, Councilmember Papinow.
Yeah, well, based on my earlier question, uh, related to what was the moving goalposts? And then in the last order by the county turned into no goal other than what apparently she's roughly saying, but won't put in writing. Um, I'm prepared to go back to uh, full-time in-person meetings.
Okay. Mr. Lozano.
Yeah, I um, I'll be really quick. Um, I'd like to go back to in-person. Um, I I uh, I I would just ask that we allow uh, for as much access, whether it be Zoom or the phone-in feature to those in the community that still feel um, to feel uncomfortable or in a medical condition that are won't, would not allow them to um, to in, to join us in person. Um, and so I don't know if that really means hybrids. I really don't know what hybrid is, other than I think Zoom and live at the same time. Um, and so, yeah, I'm I'm prepared to to do that as well.
So um, again, uh, clarify my question. Um, if we were to uh, choose a Zoom hybrid, we would need some more time if we wanted to go back to live meetings, the next meeting on December seventh, we could do so uh, and still have the phone-in feature to allow people from home. Is that correct, Mr. Heinz?
That is correct, Mayor.
Well, that would be the route that I would like to take to resume on December seventh with the phone-in call-in feature for those people at home. Would would my would the council be okay with that?
Yes. Yes.
Okay, very good. Thank you all.
All right. Do we need public comment on this item, Tina?
Yes.
Okay, do we have public comment?
Not at this time now.
All right, if you have a public comment, you can raise your hand by pressing star nine or raise your hand on Zoom, and we will let you speak. Give you a moment to do that if you'd like to. Otherwise, we'll be moving on.
Think we just got one.
Yeah.
All right. Go ahead.
I had the Coons family. Go ahead and mute your mic, and you have five minutes. Thank you.
Hi, I just wanted to very quickly say thank you very much for voting for the in-person meetings. I think that will make a huge difference. So thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate that. Any other comment?
One moment. Yes, we do have another hands raised. We have Mrs. Ward.
Miss Ward, go ahead.
Hi, I also wanted to extend a thank you to you all. I think this will be uh, step in the right direction and good for the public. Thank you.
Thank you.
And we have one more hands raised online.
Okay.
Emily, Emily Sanders.
Ms. Sanders.
I uh, would also like to say thank you. I think you guys made a great choice, but I wanted to echo your concern about the the moving goalposts. And that's kind of why I'm encouraging you guys to end the state of emergency in our city of Galt is because there is no end in sight, and they they do keep changing the rules to the game. So um, just a little encouragement. I think you guys are on the right track, but thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sanders. And I I think a couple of us, uh, Papinow, go ahead.
Yeah, so real quick, we've addressed our meetings, uh, would be appropriate to talk about the committees and commissions and their, as we've had the desire from them to some of them at least to to meet in person. Should we talk about that now or consider that later?
I I would, um, the the way I'm seeing this item is that council, since council is returning to in-person meetings, that the commissions and committees would also be allowed to return to those in-person meetings as well. Um, the beauty of the continual passage of the AB three sixty one um, recognition is that we we still have that flexibility. So City Attorney Splendario can correct me if I'm wa- if I'm wrong, but should a committee or commission desire to continue uh, to meet uh, via Zoom, uh, they have that flexibility to do that or to meet in person. Again, uh, City Attorney, please correct me if I'm wrong.
That's accurate, uh, city manager. And and I would also say that if there's any particular council member that is unable to, well, obviously, uh, assuming if once the Zoom gets set up, it it would, you know, if there's a particular council member that's un- unable to be there. Um, as long as the AB three six one, it gets continued passed by the city. Um, a particular council member could avail themselves uh, assuming the technology and and staff is able to have that set up. So there is flexibility if AB three six one continues to get passed.
So so question, Mr. Heinz, and and for you, Mr. Splendario, um, would it be would it, would it be possible without violating Brown Act or anything for um, the city uh, for the each relevant committee or commission commission um, that we could reach out to each of the members? And see if they were interested in doing that, or would they need to agendize that at each of their meetings to decide as a body? Or or could they just reach out and say, is there any one of you that want to remain on Zoom? And then they could, then, because I'm I'm only asking because by doing that, let's say we have a certain committee that that they have a couple of members that want to re- remain on Zoom, you obviously need to implement the hybrid option for them, and that would take time. So I'd hate to delay their meeting, you know, by way to the first meeting, then they decide they want two people, then they have to wait the next meeting, you know, you know what I'm saying?
So so what we would do is now that we have council consensus on the return to in-person meetings, is I would ask uh, Clerk Hubert to reach out to the chairs of the commissions and committees to essentially do a poll. And find out which committees are interested in meeting in person and which committees are um, interested in resuming their their Zoom schedule or some level of hybrid. And then um, then we as staff will react to um, accommodate whatever their desires are.
Okay. That answered my question. So so to clarify, we're gonna leave uh, it up to each commission and committee if they want to do full return hybrid. What or stay on Zoom or whatever.
Yes, and and this is the flexibility of AB three sixty one.
Uh, Mr. Solis, you have a comment?
Yeah, I just uh, for our Parks Rec Commission and our Commission on Aging, just want to get a bare minimum of what what is acceptable. We don't have the staff to run Zoom phone calls and that kind of thing. So what is the bare minimum that you're gonna want from our commissions?
So we're gonna, we're gonna have to have a discussion internally about that, and I'm gonna have to have to have a discussion uh, with the chairs of those committees. Uh, because if uh, we've got to do our best to accommodate them, but if we can't, then we've got to reach some sort of accord uh, that allows them to continue to conduct their business.
Okay, I I I'm pretty certain the Commission on Aging is very interested in going back live.
Right.
I I don't know about the Rec Commission, so um, thank you. So uh, does does council have any other questions regarding the commissions and committees concerned that Mr. Papinow brought up? No? Okay. And we have no further public comment on this item?
Correct, there is no more hands raised online.
Okay, all right, we'll move on. Next item is going to be item H four from our Public Works Department, and his subject is going to be the Corrigan Boulevard Expanded Traffic Improvements. Mr. Selling.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening and uh, Mr. Mayor and fellow council members. Uh, so this item is to consider multiple staff recommendations in response to traffic-related concerns within the Corrigan Boulevard corridor. Over the past two council meetings, staff have advised the council regarding options to help reduce speeds and improve safety within the corridor. Through these council discussions, the council has expressed concerns to provide additional intersection control specifically at the box hall and Lake Canyon intersections. And request an information uh, regarding its authority to approve such. Staff have researched this and determined that while the council has authority to approve such measures, it must be consistent with the city engineer's recommendation per the Galt Municipal Code. Consequently, staff have advised council of the need to first conduct detailed intersection evaluations and data collection before any additional intersection control can be considered. Uh, staff is again recommending council provide that direction tonight. Additionally, staff recommend purchase of two radar speed signs to provide immediate feedback to drivers and increase their awareness and uh, compliance with posted speeds. Also, the Galt Police Department will continue to conduct speed and traffic enforcement operations throughout the corridor and increase efforts as their resources allow. Lastly, staff recommend a project to restripe the corridor to reduce vehicular lane widths and expand bicycle lane widths to reduce vehicular speeds and enhance safety for all road users. Mr. Mayor and council members, this concludes my remarks. Mr. Clarkson and myself are available for any questions through the discussion. Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. Um, so I have three questions. One, um, just clarification, um, this through the restriping project of the road, um, I just want to make sure I'm understanding the staff report properly correctly, is that uh, realistically, uh, for the process of design, uh, award, uh, award of contract, so on and so forth, um, we would expect um, the construction completion to be fall of next year. So uh, is that correct?
Yeah, yeah, I think that that's our our estimated timeframe at this point. And that's uh, based on, just to be clear, part of the council uh, is that we would use uh, existing appropriation authority under the CIP project noted to um, to let a contract uh, to to allow the city manager to let a contract if the council approves tonight up to a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Again, that's an estimate on what we think it would take for a consultant to do that. To use one of our on-call consultants, if we were to do a full request for proposal process, you're you're probably looking at adding, I would conservatively say, three, maybe four months. So.
So you said, you said two hundred and twenty-five, did you mean a hundred and twenty-five?
I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Staff.
Yeah, oh, I said two twenty-five. Yeah, I'm sorry. I meant one twenty-five. Yes.
Okay. So um, I know we discussed what that is and like what it exactly is narrowing the lanes and then the the bike. So would, was council going to get a chance to peek at the finished design, like once it comes back from the design a contract before it actually goes to construction? Is there going to be any like, will we get to see that at all? Or I mean, I just want, I I just want before the council considers approving exactly what we're talking about by restriping. And and if and if and if if the answer is no, we won't see that once we approve, then I maybe we just real quickly, we just touch on the overall of it.
Sure. And and we can do it either way. We can, based on the council's desire and direction tonight, we can definitely bring it back for, you know, council's approval or at least information at the point that the final design is is set. So.
Yeah, I mean, I don't want to drag the meeting out tonight on that. I'm just saying, should it be approved? I I just, because you know, we talked about what we're doing, but then you haven't really had an actual design, you know, down to the particulars. I think, you know, I would at least like to peek at it just to know what we're expecting when that time came or something. That's just me. I don't know. That's my thoughts. My second question is. To give clarification on option number three. So I read the staff report and I I understand. You know, I I read the municipal code actually myself, looked at it and I, you know. I I understand about the, so I get that, you know, regardless of even if last meeting, the council had, you know, the majority of the council had directed, you know, to implement a stop sign at an intersection or whatever. Or should that be something that the council wants? That what it basically, if I understand this correctly, is that engineering discretion still prevails. So to clarify, what I'm, what I'm seeing here in option three is what you're asking is you're asking the council to, or you're asking us to allow you to, if we're, we want to see intersection controls, or if that's what we're, we're wanting to see options for that, you're asking us to be able to go and collect some more data on those particular intersections specifically. And then see what, within those parameters, you would be comfortable either by warrants or by your engineering discretion that you are allowed to give, what sort of things you would be willing to allow at your discretion? That the council be asking for it. Is that, is that, did I word that properly? Is that where we're?
Yeah, yeah, I think that that's sufficiently what it's asking, essentially. In order to look at additional intersection control over what's currently in existence at at the respective intersections, we would need to conduct a, you know, a thorough intersection evaluation, collect some data. And then, you know, review that, probably do some research to see, based on the data we get back, you know, how close it may or may not be to, you know, allow for and always stop control say or or a traffic signal, whatever the intersection control might be. Could be something, you know, on a lower level, like a flashing beacon for pedestrians or whatnot. So we would be looking for a direction, whether you'd want us as staff to do those evaluations, to gather that data, to do that research or direct us to utilize a consultant, a third party, if you will.
So with those two options being presented, and I apologize because I know that was in there, but it was a little bit, I kind of didn't quite understand exactly in the last paragraph. Where it said that if we let staff do it, it would, I think it's contradictory to me. So could you clarify what would be? If we were to to do such a thing, what what would be the? What would be the best to do to, what would be the pros and cons to having in-house staff do that collection of data versus versus an outside? Can you just?
Yeah, no, great question, Mayor. I would say the the pros would be it's it's going to be somewhat more expedient. Likely if if staff does it over a consultant for a couple of reasons, just because even though we have a couple of on-call traffic consultants available to us, there's still some time involved in, you know, in processing a a purchase order or contract to do that. And then not knowing what their schedule is and how fast or not they can move. My suspicion is that it would, it would take a bit longer in that regard too. So so the the pro would be for staff to to provide a faster process, if you will. The con, as as I would see it, and Mr. Clarkson, I know is on the line and may have additional comment. So the con, I guess, if you if you want to call it a con, is, you know, obviously, we're we're staff. And so you you would have, I guess, the, maybe the pro, I'm going to characterize as a pro really for the consultant. Is there, you know, an independent third party? And so you would, you know, basically have that. More connotation, if you will, for lack of a better term. If they were to conduct the the analysis. So they may, having, you know, some greater expertise to an added pro for a consultant might be that they're just more familiar with, you know, new potential safety enhancement type options that may be available that we may not be aware of. So.
Do you, so you're not, I mean, I'll speak a little more frankly, do you, you're not saying that a pro or con would be that by using outside agency, there there might be a greater chance that they would be able to give their engineering nod to something that maybe in-house staff would not, or is that not really you think is a factor?
I don't know that that's a factor. What I would say is they, again, I think through their analysis and their familiarity, you know, working for a variety of agencies, they may have, you know, I guess, a less conservative sense of, you know, engineering judgment. So again, the pro there, I guess, the flip side of that coin is that city staff, you know, are much more vested, you know, in protecting the city from potential liability. So, you know, you can look at it either way. So.
Okay. And then last question before I let my other council chime in here is, how long do you anticipate that that collection of data for those two intersections to take, to take?
Yeah, another great question, Mayor. So as we kind of touched on, I believe, at the last meeting, this is kind of the bad time of year, if you will, simply because of inclement weather. So when you're collecting traffic data, you want to have clear conditions, if you will, you know, non-holiday weeks. And and typically collect data on Tuesdays, Wednesdays and Thursdays. So Mondays and Fridays are automatically out. So, you know, this time of year, if you have a rain event or something that can throw off traffic patterns, you know, less pedestrians, maybe that kind of thing. So that basically shuts down that week because you can't collect data the day before, day after a a weather forecast event. So that coupled with the holidays and, you know, school out and things like that. There's probably, you know, as I look at the calendar, and I was explaining this, I think, to the Vice Mayor earlier, that there's probably a week, you know, between after, well, there may be a couple of weeks or so, two, three weeks after Thanksgiving, before Christmas, again, weather permitting, would be a window to potentially collect data. And then, and then you'd basically be looking at, you know, early to mid-January. So. So, yeah, those are the data collection windows. And then it just the additional time to, you know, then process that data. And like I say, do the, do the research and evaluation.
Okay, all right. Let my constituents make comments now. Does anybody want to? Go ahead, if you want to weigh in. If no one wants to speak, I I think, go ahead, Mr. Vandenberg. You're on mute, sir.
Sorry. Thank you, sir. This has gone for like a year and a half, two years, way back when this started, you know, they wanted, there was a an option to have eleven controlled intersections. I think everybody knows where everybody else stands. I move to authorize a recommendation, one from staff, two, to authorize the city manager to enter into a recommend, recommend, the recommended consultant engineering contract. And three, to make intersections at Corillian Boulevard and Box Hall, as well as Corillian Boulevard and Lake Canyon Controlled Intersections with stop signs and crosswalk signals. Do I have a second?
You have, so to clarify, you, I want to clarify what you said. You're, you're, you're making a motion to move forward with when you're making a modification to number three?
Correct.
Okay. I would like to get clarification. I just, I'm confused. I'm I'm just trying to struggle with understanding what we're allowed to do with the parameters of what we've been given. I just if we're allowed to make that motion, I just trying to get some legal.
Yeah. Yeah, Mayor. The, the, the recommendation, the the choice for council on on what's agendized is to to approve or not approve the the collection by staff. So the a motion to install A, B, or C traffic control device at the intersections is not within the purview of the agenda item as it's framed to the, to the council. So, so I know there was a motion made by Councilmember Vandenberg, but I'm not sure if there's going to be a second, but that would be the the flaw with that, based on the the agenda description tonight.
It made, in the last council meeting, it was my impression that it was quite clear that we wanted one of those options.
I just, I'm not sure it was, I'm not sure why it was not agendized. Yeah, I I kind of want some clarification to reviewing the minutes. The minutes did state that we wanted to bring back option one, two, and and options for controlled intersections at those two sites. I do, however, understand that the staff report contains something that says that the council doesn't have the authority to do that without the discretion of the engineer. So that's where I'm, I'm just trying to get clarification on where, what we're allowed to do within what here. I, I, I I I don't, what what I want to, wanted to know is if, let me give you a theoretical here. So if we were, if somebody seconds his motion and there was a vote and the vote is approved theoretically, you're saying that that vote still falls under the fact that the engineer would still say, okay, fine, you've directed us to stop signs there. But I still have to go collect that data and give our discretion before actually it would take place. Is is that my understanding of it?
Yeah, I guess what I'll say is the municipal code still requires a city engineer's authority to install that. So even if that were a vote and 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 an action taken, notwithstanding the Brown Act issue, it would, that that direction would still be subject to the analysis that Mike and his team are going to have to do anyways. So it just, the, the, the municipal code requires that. So both things, the direction to go down that path could be, you know, if it were given, Mike's team would still have to do that. And Mike would stop to be able to sign off on it as the city engineer pursuant to chapter ten, title ten point twelve of the municipal code.
Can, all right, so can we leave the motion on the floor for a moment so that I can have some discussion from other council? Can we do that? Or do we have to have a second or the motion dies?
Well, what I would say is you really want to have a second. But because it's outside the parameters of the, what, what's, what is agendized, I would simply ask if Councilmember Vandenberg wanted to withdraw his motion so that, to open up the floor for discussion. Or if there's a second, then you can have that discussion. But again, as, as, as the city attorney, I want to caution as far as the Brown Act and the agenda for tonight.
Do I have a second?
I have a, I will do second.
Seconded by Vice Mayor Sandu. Do we need to call a roll call? Do we need to have a discussion? Or can we have a discussion?
You can have a discussion.
All right, we have a motion on the floor. I'm going to go to Councilmember Lozano, as his hands raised.
Yeah, sorry about that. My unmute button wasn't unmuting again. First of all, I just want to point out, I thought we were going to go to public comment. That's why I didn't raise my hand earlier. I have a question in regards to the, the intersection studies that we're talking, that Mr. Selling, you were speaking of. Are the, will those include speed studies for those areas as well?
Yes, they will.
Okay. And how hard is it, or how difficult would it be to add an intersection to that request? How much more time are we talking about?
I'm going to defer to Mr. Clarkson. He's got a sense of that. I would say, you know, counts, you're, you're looking at typically a seven, seven-day count on a good week. So depending on if our, I think we have a contractor that puts out our tubes. If they could do all three at once, it may not add much time there. It would just be the actual engineering evaluation. But he may have further comment on that.
Did you have a particular?
City Council and Mayor, good, good evening. This is Clarkson, the city engineer. You know, we have the equipment to do one full intersection at a time. And, and so, once we collect whatever priority of intersections we have, once we collect that data, we will move, you know, you know, good data, we will move to the next one. And then after that, move, move whatever we have to. So, so that's and then it, then it only takes about a week after that to analyze each of the intersections as we get, as we get the data in. We can, we can be simultaneously reviewing the previous intersections data while we're collecting the next intersections data. Again, it has to be good weather. School has to be in, no holidays, stuff like that.
Okay, I understand that. So let me, let me ask this question. If without doing the, the, the data collection, you don't know what the speed will look like. I'm just concerned, my only concern is, well, I have several, but my only concern on the matter, the actual issue of the collection of the data is that should it come back ten miles an hour over what it is now in terms of the eighty, eighty-fifth percentile, are we required at that point to raise the speed limit in that, in that area?
Well, irregardless of taking the, the data right now, you know, I'll get around to that, answering that directly. We have to recertify our speed limits that are above the prima facie, the twenty-five mile an hour speed limit. So, and we are starting to do that now. That's going to take the next several months of getting that on multiple streets. So that has, that has to occur regardless of whether we move on to this intersection or not. And so the findings that we would have would be utilized in our, you know, every five years, we certify these, the speed limit. And so, so we're at that time right now.
Okay.
But we wouldn't be able to put anything off. And and we have a, we have a discretionary of a generally around five miles an hour.
Okay. Okay, so that, well, that answers that question. I appreciate it. And it, so it sounds like regardless, it's, we're going to do a speed survey in the next several months anyway, in that, in that area, that will determine what the speed is for that, for that for Corillian. And, and I think that's going to be important because that is a large issue on Corillian in terms of what I hear from the the constituencies that speed, people speed regularly. So we may address that. And then I'll just address the motion that's on the table. I'll be voting no, just so everyone's clear and so that everyone's clear as to why is because it's, it's not a legal, in my mind, it's not a legal motion based on what's been presented. But. You know, I'd, I'd be happy to, to talk about a different motion when it comes around.
Councilmember Vandenberg, you have your hand up.
Thank you, Mayor, I'm not sure why we would do traffic studies before restriping the road, so. In my mind, traffic studies would be pushed out until almost next year. And looking at the minutes in this week's packet, it clearly states additional items, including intersection controls for either Corillian and Box Hall. Lake Canyon, so, again, I don't know why it wasn't there when we clearly stated by vote that we wanted it. That's all I have.
Yeah, Mr. Hines or Mr. Mr. Selling, could you address that, with his question is. Because I, I would like to answer too, is this, I mean, well, I think I want to piggyback on his question. If this was, if we were aware of this, I know there was some talk about discretion and stuff last time. But I don't think it was very clear, specifically clear, if someone would have said last meeting. That, you know, Mr. Farmer, or Mr. Vandenberg, or Mr. Sandy, or whoever that voted last time. You know, I understand what you want to do, but we, the council doesn't have the authority to put a stop sign in without us signing off on the discretion. There, there was a lot of talk about, well, I'm not comfortable with having staff, whatever, so I just want to get clarification, that's, if that's what's changed now, is we, you're now coming forward saying. That is the case now, when that really wasn't made clear last time, is that, is that, am I wording that correctly?
I'm going to let Mr. Selling. Answer that question.
Yeah, I, I think the way the question was asked and answered last time, it. You know, there was, there was a, a mis- misinterpretation potentially. And maybe Mr. Splendario may want to elaborate on that too, so, again, the, the, as far as intersection controls go. Yeah, the Galt Municipal Code is clear, and that's typical for most, you know, agencies, cities and counties. You know, for things of this nature, they're given to, you know, a licensed professional to, to have that discretion. Whether it's an engineer, or maybe an attorney, or something like that, so, per the code, it does give that discretion to the city engineer. The, the other thing is, you know, and consequently. There's a process, and so the process is, is to collect the data, do the evaluation, and determine what the intersection control. If any additional is needed, is warranted, depending, so. Basically, our, our recommendation is to give us the direction, whether it's us or a consultant, to do those. You know, evaluations and, and data collection, and, and make that determination, so, you're not, I guess, jumping to that conclusion. Necessarily, you have to go through the process, and, and then let the process. You know, identify what, if any, intersection control change is warranted.
Okay, Mr. Mr. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Selling, you know that on the staff report. Intersection Control Authority, that's what we're talking about, right? So, in, in, in the Galt Municipal Code does not allow. To do anything, even majority of the council asking, as you just know.
Yes, for, for intersection control, it does not allow the council to do that, yes, correct.
My next question is, who make the Galt Municipal Court?
My understanding would be the city council.
So is not basically compared to the city council?
I'm, I'm not sure what you're asking, can you clarify?
No, but I'm talking about, if the, if the majority of the council or council wants to change, the Galt Municipal Court. How, what, what, what is the procedure?
I think that's a question for city attorney.
Yeah, I can speak to that. Ordinances typically require, any ordinance is required through readings by the city council, and introduction, discussion. Direction, usually vote to move it on to a second reading, if that's the will of the council. And then at the second reading of the council, they can modify the municipal code through that ordinance.
And I'd like to piggyback on to, uh, uh, city attorney Splendario's. Explanation, that Galt Municipal Code was put in place by a prior council to ensure that these controls. Always went in under the auspices of the city engineer. And I think that it was their. Their desire that, that those controls and that control being the city engineer was always in place. Otherwise. We, we'd have a certain level of chaos.
Yes, sir, but I, I do understand, but there, there is some other kind, we always. The council coming in, they change the procedure, they change the some. Called municipal code, I give you the example, in this city, not for this issue, the other issue, they have a one-year term. To the mayor, then the new council came in, they made the two-year term. To the council, so it, it's always, it's no matter whoever, already, we will discuss, review it, if the council. I believe, choose to do it, I think they have the authority to do it, right, that's why, that's my questioning.
It is your code, sir, but, but bear in mind, that code was put in play. And supported by every council that has come before this one. And if this one feels it needs to be changed, then we can have that discussion. Regarding the change in the council term, that matter was an, a council-focused. Or council-centric change in the ordinance, it did not have the far-ranging impact of what you're talking about right now. Because you're talking about taking the city engineer out of the placement of traffic controls, which is essentially. Which is an essential part of his job. And putting that. In the hands of council members who don't have as experience and background. In making sure that those controls are adequate and meet state standards, that's, that's what I'm hearing you say.
No, 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 I, I totally understand what you, but I'm just trying to ask what the procedure is. Is also doing or not, is it different in, in, in the future, but I'm just asking. The municipal court, who makes the council, right? And then, I mean, is, is council have the authority or not, that's why I was just asking.
Yeah, I, I, I've, I've already answered that, yes, the council has the ability to change the municipal code. However, there are ramifications to changing the code for this particular instance.
Thank you.
I, I think the Vice Mayor is clear on your answer, sir, it, it's a, it's really a yes or no answer, and I, I think we all.
And I said yes.
Mr. Papinow.
Thank you. Bring us back to the resolution that's on the agenda. That we're talking about. And I believe we've had agreement on items one and two. Regarding the radar signs. And the narrowing, restriping. You know, my view is that if we agree that those are good ideas. Then we need to get them done so that we can move on to item three. And make an accurate assessment as to what kind of intersection controls. Are needed, appropriate, warranted at each of the intersections, the two that we're discussing primarily. But, you know, others as well, I think we need to get the first two steps done so that we can make a, a good assessment on the other ones. Regarding the motion on the table, and certainly not prepared to override the city engineer's expertise. And try and put in a traffic control without data to justify it. You know, and, and that would be overriding the city engineer's expertise as well as. You know, in violation of our own municipal code, so. Yeah, a- as to the motion, I couldn't support it. And, you know, as to the resolution, I would certainly be prepared to move forward. With all sections, one, two, and three, as they're written. Thank you.
So. Let me, let me understand something here, so, we have a motion on the floor, just to reiterate that in a second, so. I, I like the discussion here, and just trying to understand kind of, and I, I appreciate, you know, the comments from Mr. Papinow and, and Mr. Lozano, and I. I clearly understand everybody's point, I think the point that Mr., that the Vice Mayor made is, is, is clear, we, we can change a municipal code. We can go down that path, and we can do that, and that's up to us to do that, unfortunately, we can't do that tonight, so, that was something that we had to pursue, we would have to do that. You know, agendize that and, and go down that road. What I want to understand is, to just be perfectly clear, and just be frank here, so. If we were to have, if we were to vote on Councilman Vandenberg's. Motion, and it was to pass, we would, that, that still, we would still have, the engineer would still have to perform. The, the data collection, and they would have to come back to us at some point in the future, which is unclear exactly, we have some ideas of how long. And the possibility would be to come back and say, good news, we're able to do what you wanted. Or we're not, but we can do something similar, or we can't do anything at all, there would be a plethora of options, but it would be solely up to. It would be, it would be basically in the sole hands of the engineer to come back with whether or not that actually happened. As opposed to the other side, if the motion was to proceed forward as staff recommended. The same thing, the exact same thing would happen, am, am I incorrect, it, it's almost the exact same thing, but one is just. Is that right, Mr. Splendario? You're, you're muted, I think, sir.
Sorry about that. Under our municipal code, our municipal, it still has to be, be applied. At the same time, whatever direction is given, so both things would have to be true, and in that case. If there was direction given to that effect. Mr. Selling would still, his team would still have to apply the municipal code, and he would stop to exercise the discretion he needs to come back, so. As a practical measure, it looked, would, you know, unless, unless, unless maybe Mike has something else to say. From my perspective, him to carry out and execute what the municipal code says, while also, while also trying to fill this council's will. Would, it would effectively look very similar under either scenario.
Do you concur with that, Mike?
I do concur with that, yes, Mayor, they would essentially be the same as you explained it.
Right, so one more thing, city attorney, with the motion that's on the floor, would you explain to council the Brown Act complications? Of voting on an item that isn't on the agenda?
Yeah, so I would. You know, the council can only take action items that have been, that have been clearly agendized, and, and the test is whether or not the public would have. Reason opportunity to know that at their intersection where they live. An immediate action to install certain control devices could occur, based on the agendas as described. I think that's, that's a tough, that's a tough argument to make, just because it, it appears to have written. To do an analysis, and then potential action would come back later for the council to take. And obviously. You don't want to, you don't want to run afoul of the Brown Act, it could invalidate an action that the council does take tonight. And the council would have to come back and effectively cure it, so. You know, that's the problem with violating the Brown Act, as well as, you know. Yeah, so I'll, I'll leave it there, but it's, it's, it's not advisable, because it could invalidate the decision, and there could be other. Other, other, other problems with it too, just as far as. It, you know, if it's, if it's viewed as an intentional violation. You know, other, other folks could get involved. With the city. So I would. I would, I would strongly advise against that.
Under, understood, so, I just want to make a statement here, I, I think. What's a little frustrating, I think, right now is that. I, I clearly understand the, the authority thing that's in place with the, with the. With the municipal code, and I, and I do concur that, that, that is what we are. Currently restricted under to operate currently with the municipal code as, as a place. My frustration would be if this was something that was known. When we give direction last week that said, bring back items one and two, and I have the minutes in front of me, just like Mr. Vandenberg, that says that we want to include. Intersection controls of Boxwell, Corillian, Lake Canyon, so forth, and so on, if we, if, if staff, and when I say staff, I mean, Mr. City Manager. If, if you knew, sir, that the municipal code was going to prohibit that particular item for being on here. It would have been a courtesy to the council prior to this meeting to say. By the way, you know, I know this is what you gave me direction to do as, with a three-two vote, however, we won't, we can't have. That particular item as an action item because we are restricted by the municipal code, because now here we're going through all the semantics of this. So I think I'm disappointed in the respects that that didn't get clarified, because now we have a motion on the floor that's been told illegal.
Right.
You, you understand, I mean, it would, we would have, could have just circumvented all that.
I understand, Mayor, but I sent out a communication to the council about a month ago that laid out all these facts.
With the municipal code?
Yes, sir.
And how come that didn't get brought up last meeting?
Well, because it was a confidential memo. And it was my hope that, that information would have been. Understood by the council, and when the issue came up, and we indicated that city engineer would needed to sign off on it. It's my hope that there would have been some sort of recollection of that memo, and, and the council would have understood. In this particular instance, in the staff report, we had to state, and there's an additional paragraph in the staff report. Laying out the authorities and powers of the city engineer. And that paragraph comes directly from the memo that I distributed about a month ago.
Okay, well, I think if three of us don't remember that, I think that it's not just one of us just happened to not read the memo, so. It was either not clear what we were discussing, or I, I, I can't comment on that, I can speak for myself, and. I don't remember that particular item as applying to this, there's been a lot of talk about discretion and things, and so. I don't remember a specific saying that the municipal code prohibits, so, that's just me, I'm not.
Understand, I'll be happy to resend you the memo that I sent out.
I don't think there's a need to do that, I think we're very clear in what, what's in front of us, I don't, we don't need.
Understood, understood, I just wanted clear to the five members of the council that this misinformation was communicated to them a while ago.
Mr. Vandenberg, you have a comment, sir?
Yes, I, I do remember the memo, I also see it quite clearly, the instruction we voted on. In the minutes of this packet, and that did not occur.
So, council member, can you tell me exactly where the difference is and what's in the minutes? And what's in staff's recommendations?
Quote, staff recommendations will, with additional items to include intersection controls, close quote.
Okay, and number three indicates that directing public works to complete a traffic and pedestrian review. Either in-house or utilizing an outside engineering consultant for Corillian and Box Hall, and Corillian and Lake Canyon. Intersections, and provide recommendations, including options for intersection controls to the city council, once completed. So the difference is, we want to give you the options for the intersection controls. But we would like to make sure that those options are informed by our research and our data. So we don't end up feeding you bad information, we prefer to have that information as we do all the information we give the council. Backed up by data and support, so we know as a staff that the decisions that you all are making are supported by good information.
As you stated, those would be recommendations, not controls as stated in, in the minutes.
Well, we, we, we state intersection controls here in the staff recommendation. We're looking for research to support intersection controls.
Intersection control recommendations.
I think, I think, well, I think, I think what we have is we have a, we have an interpretation of two different levels here. I think the council's interpretation, when I say the council, I would refer to possibly Councilman Vandenberg, and, and possibly probably myself as well. Is I think that our understanding of what was construed with the vote last week was to include intersection controls, so that means. We thought that was pretty cut and dry, but the interpretation, the wide, the wider interpretation would be a, a, a correct. Description of a wider interpretation of that, by the staff would be, okay. That, that means to us, let's start down the road with the things that we need to do in order to get those approved. That that means to us, let's start down the road with the things that we need to do in order to get those approved. Would that be a fair assessment?
Well, we want to do the research before we provide recommendations to council.
Okay, so I just, and and, yeah, I think it's just an interpretation issue here. But I want to circle back just real quick, and I don't want to, I don't want to just keep diving into this, but. I I appreciate the memo and I understand that we got that memo, but I also want to say. I think there was a lot of opportunity after the three, two vote last meeting that you could have reached out to myself or Councilman Vandenberg or any of us that were that three, two majority vote and say. You know, in confidentiality, you could have said, I want to remind you of a memo that I gave you. That I'm, I were not actually able to give that to you as an action item because of this memo that I sent you back in blah, blah, blah. So so we need to figure out how, because when this agenda came out. And that was not an action item. I'm just saying, I think there was a way we could have circumvented this this part of the discussion, but.
Understood, but I actually did remind one of our members that that memo did exist.
Okay, I don't think we need to continue going on.
Understood, sir. It's not productive and, but I want to make it clear to the public and to the council. That we want to give you recommendations that are backed up with the full support of the experience and knowledge of our staff. And that's all we're trying to do here. No one's trying to be obtuse. We're just trying to give you the best information we can and we want that opportunity.
Could we go, Rich, would you mind if we go see if there's any public comment and then I'll let you? Okay, that's what I was going to ask about, and then you have some comments after. Sure, sure thing. Do we have any public comment, Ms. Hubert?
We have no hands raised online. Oh, I'm sorry, my apologies. We do have one. Mistress Satter. A mutual mic and you have five minutes.
Can you guys hear me okay? Great. Thank you for the opportunity to speak, Jerry Satter. I've spoken several times regarding this issue. Want to thank council and staff for for looking at this again. I guess my concern is, is I really understand. Council's, council members concerned to address the. The concerns raised by the community and how certain things were were brought through via petition. I just think it's important with how. Much deliberation has gone on with this and the importance that the council act in. Full unanimous vote on this. So while I understand. Mr. Vandenberg or Councilman Vandenberg's concerns and some of the Vice Mayor and Mayor Farmer. I I think it's important that that we follow the the process and the recommendation. So that we can get a unanimous vote on this. I also like the fact that the recommendation and the discussion. Included having council have an opportunity to review the lane striping because as a. Community member, I still have concerns about that. We have some larger vehicles in the community and trucks that use that road and I'm concerned if we. Narrow the lanes too much, we might create another problem. So I really appreciate that. Ask that perhaps that come back to council, but I just want to say that I think it's important that council vote. Unanimously on this, on the motion, and I think. I know that there's a strong desire to really address the the feedback from the community and I I think we can get there. I think we just need to to perhaps follow some of the items that have been outlined in the discussion this evening. So. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, sir.
There are no additional hands raised online.
Go ahead, Councilman Lozano.
Actually, Mr. Selling had his hands up, hand up first. He might answer one of my questions.
Mr. Selling, go ahead.
Yeah, no, I just wanted to clarify for the council. I understand the council's direction last time as far as the intersection control. It's simply, you know, it would be putting the cart before the horse. I mean, just to kind of put it simply. So we have to do the analysis before we can recommend. You can't say this intersection is going to be controlled by a stop sign. Or a signal before you do the analysis and collect the data. So that's really what it is. So hopefully that helps with the understanding. Thanks.
Mr. Lozano, you'd like to go now?
Yeah, that's a little bit of what I was going to say, but. So my, my, my question, I don't have a question. This is my thought process and Mr. Splendario can correct me if I'm wrong. So the motion, just so I know what I'm voting on, we have a motion of second on the table. The motion is for. The first two items in the staff report and not for item three. That's the staff report. In place of item three. The motion is, and Mr. Vandenberg or Councilmember Vandenberg, correct me if I'm wrong also, just because we've had a lot of discussion in between here. The the third part of it is to install or bring back, to install. Stop signs at those two intersections. That's my understanding.
Two intersection controlled intersections with stop signs and crosswalk signal.
Okay, so, okay, and so. Yeah, that that's not going to work. Simply because, well, the obvious, the. The the way that the the item was agendized, but also. I I would agree that. You know, we need to do something, and this is meeting number four on this. Specific topic. And we're still back where we were at the beginning of meeting one. And so my thought is this. Let staff who are the professionals in this area give us what we need in terms of. The the, not just the data. But but also the recommendation about what would go in. I certainly wouldn't, wouldn't, you know, expect anything less from them. And so. Like I said, unless there's a amendment to the emotion, I am, I can't support a motion that. Goes against our municipal code and and certainly the state law. So. If we could have a different motion. We might be able to to get where we need to be. And and certainly I would support staff's recommendation on item number three, because I think that's that's the appropriate thing to do. It gets what we need to get done and 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 get the community input on it.
Okay, so let me try to put this to rest real quick here, because I I think we've exhausted this again. But I think we've had good dialogue and I think there's just a lot of. Miscommunication on on this time around. I mean. I have a lot of respect for my council members and I I do very much support. What Councilman Vandenberg wants to do and what Mr. Mr. Sandu wants to do. And I voted and I reflected that in my vote last week. I've already expressed, of course, my disappointment with the fact that I think we could have avoided a little bit of situation here if if. If even in my agenda meeting with the city manager that we could have touched on the subject about the municipal code and reiterated that. This could have been shared again, you know, whether it's two times or shared three times, I think it. We could have, you know, done that, but that's that's nor here nor there now, we're past that. So. If my understanding is that a vote, a supporting vote of Councilman Vandenberg's. Motion is going to be be an invalid vote and get us into some other issues. And even if it wasn't, we would still be down the same path. Of getting the data collected and all that, which to me is very frustrating, but I do understand that we are under the current municipal code, which is in place now. I I actually have a problem with, you know, a lot of things where one person is in charge and has the ultimate say. I don't really feel comfortable with that. So maybe that's something we look at in the future on these particular items in our municipal code. But for now, we're here in this in this moment with this item. For the sole fact that I feel like both options, whether approve staff tonight. Or or go with the motion on the floor are going to end up with the same thing, which is. The city engineer coming back saying yes or no, we're going to do this or that. What I would like to say is that if I was to support the staff. Recommendation tonight, I would like to, I would like to give them the benefit of the doubt. That they are going to do, that they understand the will of the majority of this council to do something in these intersections, and I would hope that they would, you know. Do their diligence to come back with some kind of answer. It may not be a stop sign, or it may be a stop sign. I would hope that there would be some compromise there, some compromise that those of us that are really pushing for this, these intersections would be willing to accept. So with all that being said. Unfortunately, and no disrespect to you, Mr. Vandenberg, I just feel like I would totally support you in your vote. But I think it would be a moot point and it would, we would just write back here having another meeting on the same subject again. So I would like to propose an alternate motion. That we approve items one, two, and three with the. With the with the caveat that we. We would like options for those particular intersections and a third intersection that Councilman Lozano would like to suggest. Be brought back with any and all possible options that would be, could be done with in-house staff. That you guys would be okay with putting your blessing on to do to improve the safety at these three intersections. I'm sure we can come up with something that we can do in addition to what's there now. It may not be a stop sign, or it may be, it may be, I don't know, but that would be my motion that I would like to propose as a substitute motion. Do I have anybody that would second that motion?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Councilman Lozano. Mr. Selling and Mr. Papino, you have comments. Go, Mr. Selling?
You know, I heard you say earlier, Mayor, you wanted the option to bring back the final design to the council, and I just wanted to make sure. You wanted to include that in your motion or not, or if there was consensus to confirm that.
I didn't, I just thought that would be something you would share with us. I don't know if it needs to be an official agenda item. I don't know, but.
I have no problem doing that. I didn't know if the city attorney wanted that or not, so.
Mr. Papino?
Yeah, I just, I just want to clarify on the motion. It added a, you had stuff into item three. And that was just to, to make it succinct that they come back. With all plausible alternatives for controls at. The intersections. So is that the only addendum?
Any, exactly. I want to see any, any and all options that would be that our city engineers would consent to doing at said intersections.
Okay, thank you. I can support that.
Would be my motion. I mean, I'm trying to find a compromise here. We all want the same thing. We all want safer intersections. I think we all. I think we're just, we're all, you know, myself included, are just frustrated with the process and feel like, you know, we get stonewalled here and there. On some of these things and and miscommunications on motions and votes and things. And so that's my motion. And we have a second on it. So I think unless there's further comment. From the council, I think that we, I would like to ask for a roll call vote on my motion first, and if it should fail, then we will go to. A vote on the the first motion.
Vice Mayor Sandu?
No.
Councilmember Papino?
Aye.
Councilmember Vandenberg?
No.
Councilmember Lozano?
Aye.
Mayor Farmer?
Aye. Motion passes three to two. All right. I look forward to seeing that data, Mike. Hopefully, we can get some things that. Will make us happy. Thank you for your report.
We'll get it.
Moving on to our next item from the Public Works Department, number five, joint exercise powers agreement and initial funding and revenue agreement for the Consumers Groundwater Authority. And appointment of city council members to Consumerless Groundwater Authority Board of Directors. Mr. Selling.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening again. As I presented at the last council meeting, the city has been working with six other agencies to develop a long-term sustainability plan for the Consumers Sub Basin. The city's sole source of water. The plan is being finalized and I'll be bringing it to the next council meeting for an informational workshop. Followed by the subsequent meeting on December twenty first, where I would bring it back for the council's consideration to approve. So it's necessary at this time in relatedly to that. To establish the governance and funding mechanisms and appoint a city council member and an alternate. Member or director to sit on the governing board. Specifically, tonight's item includes the following. First, approval of an agreement. Between the seven agencies to establish a joint powers authority as the governance mechanism. Second, to approve an initial funding and revenue agreement. For the first year's implementation of the groundwater sustainability plan or GSP, as the plan is often referred. And then third, to appoint a city council member to serve on the Consumers Groundwater Authority or CGA as as it's often referred to. So to sit on the the authorities' Board of Directors and also appoint an alternate director. And as you may have seen in the staff report, the JPA or Joint Powers Authority Agreement. Stipulates that the alternate member need not be a member of the. Of the governing board, but governing body. So the alternate does not need to be a council member in our case for the city. And, you know, basically that came out of other agencies were interested to. Potentially have a staff member be that person. So the council has has the latitude here. To appoint a second council member as the alternate or someone else. So. So Mayor Farmer and council members, this concludes my presentation and I'm available for any questions you may have.
All right, do we have any comments from council for Mr. Selling? Mr. Lozano?
Yeah, thank you for the, for your work on this, Mr. Selling. We're out finally at the point where I think we can, we can start getting some work done over there at the newly formed JPA. I would just submit, and and just to be upfront, I have, I don't have any necessarily any interest in in. Serving on the JPA. But I would submit that maybe the alternate be Mr. Selling. Only because of his intimate knowledge of the of the, well, the process and the JPA. Unless that's going to. You know, put way too much on his plate. I can't imagine that it would, but but maybe it will. So that's all I have. I I appreciate the report and and your work on this.
Yeah, I would, I would agree on that. I think Mike would be the best fit. I would not be able to as well. Plate's pretty full at the moment. Do you, you said we don't have to appoint a council member, or can you reiterate that?
Yeah, so the actual primary director for the city must be a council member, must be a member of the governing body. The alternate need not be.
Okay. Oh, does anybody want to volunteer for that? Well, what's the parameters? How often they meet and what's the?
Yeah, no, great question, Mayor, and I apologize if I should have elaborated a bit more in the comments. So the initially, the thinking is that the Board of Directors would meet once a month. And, you know, that that may only be for the first, you know, I don't know, six, six, eight months or so. Essentially, they'll need to kind of establish the the ground rules. Basically, they'll need to appoint their chair, you know, vice chair, their their officers. And and then give staff some direction on and and approve contracts and whatnot. Related to the projects that'll that'll be initiated to to work toward that sustainability. There's, you know, ongoing data collection that occurs. There's well monitoring, a lot of quality monitoring. So there'll be. Reports like that brought to the to the governing Board of Directors for approval, some metal to the state. So that kind of thing. It's possible that it may go to, you know, bi-monthly, perhaps quarterly even at some point, obviously at the discretion of the Board of Directors. So, but I would envision, you know, at least the first six, eight months, maybe the first year would be monthly. And then, you know, it could, it could change, it could back off a bit after that. So I wouldn't expect. And actually, I think I put in the report, they're they're looking to just get this thing going right away, which next Monday would be the first. Meeting they're looking at. The meetings are tentatively targeting to use the community room at the at the police department. That's where the the working group that I've been involved in for the last, whatever, two and a half years. Was meeting prior to COVID kind of thing, and that's where they're looking to hold these board meetings, obviously pending availability of that room. So it would be located here in town, so that may be of convenience to whoever may be selected. And, you know, they'll determine. If it's, I think they were looking at tentatively the the fourth. Fourth Monday or no, fourth Wednesday, I'm sorry. fourth Monday or no, fourth Wednesday. I'm sorry. So just to give you some additional information on how that might work for your schedule, which is obviously good. It's, it's a non-council week. So that I just want to make you aware of that if that's helpful.
All right. Thank you, sir, for that information. Councilman Vandenberg?
I'll volunteer.
All right. Thank you, sir, for that. Does anybody have any comments about Councilman Vandenberg representing us on this? All right. Do we have any public comment on this item, Tina?
No, there are no public comments, no hands raised.
You do want to comment on this item, please press star nine on your phone if you're on the phone, or you can raise your hand on Zoom. All right. So this is not a, this is not an action item. We have an appointed person, so with no comment from council and no public comment, we are good to move on? All right. Actually, we need to adopt a resolution, looks like here.
Yeah.
All right. So looking for a motion to adopt a resolution approving number one, the joint exercise of powers agreement establishing the Consumers Groundwater Authority, JPA. Number two, Consumers Sub Basin Groundwater Substility substantiality, wait, sorry, can't see this far away, sustainability agencies, initial funding and revenue agreement for implementation of groundwater sustainability plan, IFRA, and appoint a member of the city council to serve on the Consumers Groundwater Authority CGA Board of Directors and also appoint an alternative director. So we have Mr. Vandenberg is our appointee and Mike Selling is the alternate director. Do I have a motion?
I will make that motion.
Okay, moved by Councilman Lozano.
Second.
Seconded by Vice Mayor Sandu. Can I have a roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu?
Aye.
Councilmember Papino?
Aye.
Councilmember Vandenberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Lozano?
Aye.
Mayor Farmer?
Aye. Resolution approved five zero. All right, moving on. I, or letter I, should I say, communication. Do we have any this evening?
None this evening.
Okay, thank you. Item J, City Clerk's report, subject going to be the Galt Youth Commission. Appoint student member to Sampreet Kaur. I'm probably butchering the name. Is it? Is it Kaur or Care? Sorry. Say again?
Kar, K-A-U-I, Kar.
Kar. And administering the oath of office. Tina?
So, good evening. As mentioned, the recommendation is to accept the student member appointment. Yasenpreet Kar is selected by the Galt Youth, yup, I can't talk either, Galt Youth Commission Adult Mentors. At the June fifteen, twenty twenty-one city council meeting, city council accepted the four applications that were submitted with one returning student member leaving three vacancies. Lauren Karen was appointed on September seventh, twenty twenty-one, leaving two vacancies. And we have received just the one application who was interviewed by the adult mentors. So it is city council's final decision. She was on the line for questions. I don't see her anymore. So if you do appoint her, we'll just administer the oath of office here in the clerk's office.
Okay, we haven't a public comment on this item.
We have no hands raised online.
Okay. Well, as the, as one of the, well, the appointed city council representative for the youth commission, I look forward to having another appointee on there, trying to fill this, this, this commission up. And so look forward to, to meeting our new person if the council have any issue with appointing the proposed member.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir, go ahead.
I would like to make a statement. I would like to accept the appointment of Yasenpreet Kar as a youth commissioner.
Okay.
I know her. She's a very good public communicator. She's a team player, and she will be asset to the Galt Youth Commission. Good luck to her. I don't know. She would like to speak, but I don't know. She's on the phone.
And not, I don't see her anymore.
Thank you.
Mr. Lozano?
Yeah, I would like to second that, and her resume is pretty impressive, as you all saw. She's also president of the Interact Club, which is a Rotary Club, but you're part of it. So real happy to have her on, and I know she'll do a great job.
I concur. Do we, we don't need a vote on this, right, Tina?
Yeah, it should be except by motion. So I do have first and second, so just roll call.
Okay. Well, do we have any public comment? No, and she's not on the?
No.
All right, go ahead and give us a roll call then.
Vice Mayor Sandu?
Aye.
Councilmember Papino?
Aye.
Councilmember Vandenberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Lozano?
Aye.
Mayor Farmer?
Aye. Approved five to zero. Welcome, Ms. Kar.
Thank you.
All right, moving on. Item K, comments by staff. Mr. Hines?
Yes, good evening, everyone. I don't have any comments in particular, so let's start with Police Chief Brian Kalanowski.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Just following up from the earlier comment that was raised by the public related to the two campers on the off-ramp of Walnut. We'll go back and follow up on that. When we first noticed it was one, and as you know, it becomes a trend. And so we need to stay on top of it and be swift in our approach. We've been communicating with the city attorney on some additional strategies for our patrol staff on other public lands like parking lots the city may have and some other things to be noticing folks during daylight hours and with twenty-four hour notice. So hopefully, we can get that moving. As you know, this ebbs and flows based on the weather. So we're seeing it sort of interface a little bit, but we will do our due diligence on that. And we will report something back at the next meeting. And that's all I have for tonight. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, chief. Let's continue our law and order theme here, and let's go with City Attorney Frank Splendaria.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Nothing separate to report tonight. Thank you.
All righty, thank you. Let's go to our Public Works Director, Mike Selling. If there's anything else he'd like to add?
Yeah, I think, you know, well, I'm sure all the council, but there was comments about the library event earlier. And I wanted to give a kudos to our facilities team for upgrading the lighting around the library. We had a request from the folks in, at the county, and we had it on our radar anyway. But we were able to purchase the, the additional lights and, and improve the lighting around there, which is greatly appreciated by the library staff, I'm, I'm told, who, particularly with the darker hours this time of year kind of thing. So it's improved the safety around there. So appreciate the efforts of our facilities team. Thanks.
All right.
Oh, and Councilmember Vandenberg, I can definitely cover for you anytime you can't make one of those meetings and, and keep you apprised on the groundwater information too, so.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Director Selling. Let's go with Parks and Rec Director, Parks and Rec Director Armando Solis.
Good evening, Mayor and councils. Can you guys see the screen?
Yes.
Yeah, I just wanted to go over our Lighting of the Night event. We're not going to have another council meeting until after this. So we're going to do our best to keep everything outdoors. We're hoping the weather is going to cooperate with us. We're going to have Santa photos, photos in front of City Hall. The cookie decorating would be inside Littleton Center. Our Valley Oaks Holiday Musical Performance will be by the tree. And then we would go straight into the lighting of the tree at six fifteen. Six thirty, Lighting of the Night Parade would start, and it's the, the route that we do downtown. And then I'd like to make sure that we invite the city council to be part of the float or have your own float. If you guys can coordinate that with Tina, we'd appreciate that. And then I just want to wish the staff and council a happy Thanksgiving. I hope you guys get to enjoy it with your families. Have a good night.
Thank you, Director Solis. Let's go with Community Development Director Craig Hoffman.
Hi, council. Nothing tonight for you. And thank you, and again, happy Thanksgiving following up on, on Armando.
Very good. Thank you, Director Hoffman. Let's go with Economic Development Manager Amy Mendez.
Good evening. Continuing with the holiday theme, I just wanted to throw out there a reminder that the Galt Police Department and Consumers Fire Department are accepting applications for the toy drive. They've already had a couple of signups, but they are continuing to accept applications at the police department for the next two weeks. So it's out on social media. We've put it out on Nextdoor. It's on our website on the front page. And so if you guys can spread that word, just to make sure that everybody is covered for the toy drive this year. That's it. That's all I have for this evening. Thank you.
All righty, thank you.
Thank you, Amy, for saving me. I forgot that item.
No problem.
It's all about teamwork here. Yes. Let's go with our city clerk, Tina Huber.
Nothing further. Have a happy Thanksgiving.
And our executive assistant, Rose Road Acker.
I have nothing tonight, but again, like everyone else, happy Thanksgiving.
And I concur with the staff and wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving, and I hope you enjoy the, the time with your families. Mr. Mayor, that concludes our staff comments.
All right, thank you, sir. We will move on to comments by city council members and future agenda items. Start with our Vice Mayor, Mr. Sandu.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, giving me the opportunity. First of all, thank you for all staff working hard. Give us a good report, working hard during COVID, and still we are under COVID. I also like to thank you for everybody we agreed to in-person meeting, because a lot of comment we see tonight, and we see personally, the city wants to be an in-person meeting. I also like to thank you the tonight with the public comments. Emily Sanders, Beverly Sanders, Kim Merrill, Kim Robinson, Brooke Shamart, and all these gamut comments, especially with Christie Ward and Jerry Sora. And these, all these comment very important to me. Thank you. Good night tonight, and have a happy Thanksgiving if I don't see you. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Papinow?
Yeah, I'd echo the Vice Mayor. Thank you to the staff for all your hard work. Thank you to the city attorney for your guidance during the meetings tonight and other nights. And then Chief Kalanowski beat me to it. I had in my notes to ask him come back with a report on the state of the homeless situation in town, freeway and otherwise. So I'll be looking forward to that. And then again, thank you to all the people who took the time to comment on the various things that are facing us. It's greatly appreciated to see the, the community involvement and happy Thanksgiving, everybody.
All right, thank you, sir. Councilmember Papinow, or sorry, Councilmember Vandenberg?
Thank you, Mayor. I was also quite pleased with all the public comment. It was, it was quite refreshing. I had planned to touch on this, and I think this meeting actually highlights what I was about to say. I've noticed, I went back and looked at a couple of previous meetings, and what happened in this meeting highlights it again that I think the city council needs to, myself, maybe I'll just say myself, needs to be more succinct and make perhaps a final statement when providing direction so that less of this confusion and less talk. I would, I think you would all agree that topics like Crowley Boulevard and things like that have gone on too long, and we've had the same arguments or conversations over and over. And I think it's unnecessary. If we were a little more focused on our intent, we could expedite things. And so in that vein, I am looking for support from my fellow council members to get a cost estimate from the staff hard numbers of what it would cost to light the water tower of the city of Galt so that the gentleman who offered to pay for it could get a hard number.
Mr. Mayor?
Go, go ahead.
May I comment on that? This, this, this item did come up in council, I believe, a few months ago. The staff and I were under the impression that the gentleman who is willing to fund this effort were going to provide us with a proposal that, that we could analyze to see if it's something that we could put in front of the council. And so that's what we've been waiting for. And so we would appreciate it the gentleman who had the idea, and we appreciate the idea, would actually submit a proposal in writing, so we could have something to analyze as staff. So then we can turn around and brief the, brief the council as to, here's the proposal from the citizen. That's what we were looking for.
He has a hard time, well, three things. One, he did reach out to the city and got no reply. This was a year ago. Two, he doesn't really, how is he supposed to make a proposal on property he does not own? Three, that is why I'm clarifying. So I'm asking for support from my fellow council members to have city staff draw up a hard number proposal for the citizen, so that he can decide whether he truly wants to pay for it or not.
So let me get some clarification from Mr. Vandenberg. So the person is wanting to pay for it. He doesn't actually do this type of thing. He just, he's the idea, and he says, I'd like to pay for it. So
Yes.
The missing piece here is find what that, does that, does that mean that finding a vendor that would do that type of thing? That, or, or that the city would do that somehow? I mean, that's the missing element here, right?
Well, right, like if you look, I look, looking through the file warrants, we had a check go out to Bear Electrical Solutions. You know, you could simply ask them to write a, do a bid for lighting the water tower. There's already electricity up there. It's just a matter of adding some lights and a control. And, you know, I don't know that it would be, you know, it's not going to be a hundred thousand dollars. I don't know what it would be in today's environment. But I just simply want to settle the matter.
Okay. Well, Mr. Mayor, may I offer to the council member, if that gentleman would be open to meeting with me, and he can call me directly, I'd be happy to meet with him in consultation with Director Selling and Economic Development Manager Mendez and our Community Development Director Hoffman as well. And perhaps we can find out exactly what he has in mind, what the lighting would look like, that he's envisioning. And then perhaps we could craft a proposal or some sort of proposal to one of our vendors at that point in time. But, I mean, given that he's funding this, and we appreciate the effort, we would like to make sure it meets his specifications before we go out and, and put a price tag on it. But he's welcome to contact me directly. I'll be happy to meet with him. And
Yeah, I, I think the idea is to, just for those of you that maybe not in the clear, understand, this is the idea would be to light it up with different colors, like if it's
Yes.
you know, blue for law enforcement for certain, or maybe during Breast Cancer Awareness Week, so on and so forth. That's, that's the idea of other cities. So I, I agree with both of you. I actually would like to, I, I would like to, you know, although you've offered, so we don't need to probably, but I would join Mr. Vandenberg in giving you a direction if you would please meet with this person, so we could put there's some ideas and then bring it back to us. I'd love to hear about it. Mr. Vandenberg, did you have a follow-up comment?
Yeah, you, you stated it quite well. So it couldn't possibly be more than ten colors, but it needs to be, you know, pink, blue, red, white, and blue perhaps for Fourth of July, you know, et cetera.
Right.
Councilmember Papinow?
Yeah, I'd certainly support the idea, and obviously, somebody needs to meet and figure out what we're looking for. Because just during this conversation, the picture in my head went from Christmas lights on the tower to floodlights to now the changing colors and stuff. So would, would be a good idea to, you know, clearly line out what especially the person who's putting the bill is expecting. But I'd be eager to see that proposal come forward. Did you call on me, sir?
Yes, you had your hand up.
Yeah, yeah, I would be in full support, but, but, yeah, I was thinking floodlights at first from the ground. And then I was thinking, now I'm thinking maybe an LED projection kind of thing. So I don't have any expertise in this area, but if you need somebody to reach out to this gentleman, I'd be happy to do that, too.
I, I would greatly appreciate it if either of the five of you can point this gentleman in my direction. And I'll be happy to sit down with him and find out what his expectation is. As we've all mentioned, he's He's footing the bill, and so we want to make sure that whatever we go out and bid or price for him. Has met his specification, so we come as close to pricing his specifications as possible. So I would appreciate it if someone could send this gentleman my way.
We'll reach out to him and make the offer, and and to end my comments, because we are on my comments, happy Thanksgiving, everybody.
All right, thank you, Jay, appreciate that, and yes. I, we will facilitate that meeting with this gentleman and you, Mister City Manager. So, moving on to Councilmember Lozano.
If I may, I'm sorry to interrupt you, Mayor, but if I may, I just want to be clear, just because I know there's been a little bit of communication in the in the past. The direction that the council gave, and I think it was the general consensus, was. That one of the council members would help connect this individual city manager, and they would meet with city staff. And work on getting an idea of the specifications of this, and then the city manager would. Provide that information, look, get, you know, his team would get bids, and then they would bring that back to council for consideration, is that, is that? Fair and accurate?
I will speak to the gentleman, I can't, I can't commit for him that he would come to staff, etc., etc., so. I I would, a minimum, will get what he is expecting and relate it to staff.
Great, thank you.
Okay, Mister Lozano.
Yeah, I will be as brief as possible, thank you for all the public comment on all of the items, really appreciate the. Enthusiastic energy out there from our public, and it's it's really important that they. And they engage, and that's, it's, it's good stuff, I just want to remind. Folks of the Star Event Dinner that's gonna happen on December third. This is a city program, it's in sponsorship with the Galt Sunrise Rotary Club. Santa will be there for our youth and adults. Who have special needs, and it's always a great spaghetti dinner for them, and and I would invite you to come out and and take a look, it's on. Friday, December third, I believe it starts at six o'clock, so. There's that, and then also the Consumer CSD is having a Santa's and Sirens Parade. It's gonna be kind of a reverse parade where you go to the fire headquarters, they're on. East Stockton Boulevard by the golf course, in between Galt and Elk Grove there, and you drive through. Bring an unwrapped toy, new unwrapped toy for the toy drive. And that's on December eighth and ninth, I think that's a Wednesday and a Thursday. So for the public and for my colleagues. It's it's a great event, it's the second year they're doing it, and it's gonna be, there's gonna be some, some. Additional items that'll be a surprise, so I would encourage you to go. And then the other thing is is. The homeless issue came up a couple of times and has, and and my memory is really foggy on this, but maybe. Vice Mayor Sandu or Mayor Farmer can help me, I think we appointed somebody, and they may be off the council now, but. Somebody to maybe a home, a regional homeless committee or something like that, do you, you know what it is?
Yeah, I was. You have yet to meet.
Oh, okay.
I don't even know what the status, I don't get anything from it or for it or what.
Yeah, you would think in this environment, they would be willing or wanting to get things going, right, so. Was that a county program or?
Yeah, it was a, it was like a regional thing, it wasn't like anything locally, it was a county, and again, gosh, it's been, it's probably been like two. It was early in our term, so it's a couple of years. Yeah, so maybe Tina could look into that and see what exactly that was, and if there's a contact that I can reach out to and see what what the status. I mean, maybe I got the wrong, maybe they they don't have the right contact for me, and I haven't been getting anything, but.
I'll look into it.
And it very well could be a program that just isn't in existence anymore either, you know, I mean, they, things happen like that, so. And that was a thought that I had in terms of some of our. Our homeless camps that are starting to pop up more outside of the normal areas, and so. And then lastly, or not lastly, but I I just want to thank. The Police Department and the Fire Department for working on a program to provide some fire extinguishers. To folks that live outside of traditional homes. You know, under bridges and stuff like that, homeless folks. And, you know, there was, there's some talk that maybe it's the wrong time of year to provide those. And and I would submit that it may, there's not really a wrong time to provide them, because. You know, they oftentimes folks that don't live in homes have bonfires and things like that, and. I just really appreciate the partnership and the the public private partnership, honestly, that went on with that, and to make that happen, so. Thank you all for that, and and look forward to more of more things where we can collaborate. And then lastly, just happy Thanksgiving to everyone, and and, you know, we. It's gonna be a a long holiday season, so enjoy it, and I appreciate. All the work staff does, and and hopefully they can take their pack off a little bit. And you go from there, and I was just gonna bring up a few more items, but I'll leave that for, it's more, I think, strategic planning meetings, so. Market master plan, Walker Park, stuff like that, so. Anyhow, thank you, that's it.
Thank you, sir. Couple of quick things, actually a few things, but I'll I'll start with more of a business item. Circling back to our public comments we got earlier with a suggestion from. From citizens about setting up some kind of community forum, I would very much like to do that, I would like to see that the council could support that. I think if Don DeToli is gonna meet with citizens of Galt and discuss. Everything that's going on and and where where we're at with that, and and all the things that have been, seem to be the the talk of of the community right now with. You know, I hear this not just through public comments, but I I get emails personally. I have people come up to me and ask me about this stuff, and I actually attended recently a meeting of community members. You know, this is at the forefront of the schools right now, but this is a Galt issue, even though it's a school issue, it's still gonna be, it's at our doorstep, and it's gonna be a Galt issue. And I would like to know if if any of my council members would support in setting up such an outdoor, maybe an outdoor. I'd like staff to come back and say what what can we do, can we set up an outdoor? Invite Mister Natoli, invite all the people that asked for this, reach out to Assemblyman Cooper and all their other representatives at the higher level, because. What we're really trying to do is get their, get their help in in supporting. You know, the community and and these concerns, so does anybody be willing to have staff do that?
I support that.
Okay, anybody else?
Yep.
Okay, all right, thank you, Mister Heinz, you understood, okay. Secondly, another item, I wouldn't mean to bring this up several times, but honestly, it's just our meeting's been long. But it it's not a huge thing, but it's kind of an important, but since we're going back to live commission and committee meetings, well, we think we are for most of them. I I was brought to my attention that they don't do the pledge of allegiance in those committees and commissions, and I think that, I think that we should be doing that, I think that any, any body of the city that meets officially. Should be doing a pledge of allegiance, and I I think that's not too much to ask, and I would like you, Mister City Manager, to see if that is the case. If they don't do that, and if so, if you could, if you could include that in their, in their, in their protocol. Would, would the council support me in that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you, appreciate that, guys. Then lastly, fun stuff, so want to thank, again, Letitia Ordez. For, you know, co co hosting this this library event with me, again, I want to name the sponsors specifically. Kirk Smith from Belved Grill, always a huge contributor, he served ice cream, the ice cream lung was long, even though it was cold. And he told me it doesn't matter the weather, people always like ice cream, so that was a big hit. And LaHeim of Galt, Carson's Coatings, Vice Mayor Paul Sandu, thank you, sir, for your, for your help. I want to thank my family for back, for helping support this event too monetarily, and and also El Rodeo. For providing some food for the event, which was a very, which was a big hit, and. So thank you again to all those people that that supported the event, was a great success. And I want to thank Andrea and Chad Johnson, Andrea is a Commission on Aging member. For their generous donation of a thousand dollars to pay for all of the senior resource guides that the Commission on Aging puts together. Every year to distribute to seniors, they pretty much covered about ninety percent of that cost with their generous donation of a thousand dollars, so I want to thank. The Johnsons for their generous donation on that, and. Last but not least, just again wishing everybody have Thanksgiving, since we won't see you until after that, and. Everybody be safe out there, enjoy family time, and Black Friday, if that's your thing, or whatever. So again, be safe, everybody enjoy family, and we'll see you guys in the next meeting, going to adjourn at nine thirty one PM. Good night.
Good night, everyone.